For me, an order for the May 3rd, 2016, City Council. Local.
Okay, Mayor Campbell.
Here.
Howgan.
Here.
McMahon.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
And Nelson.
Here.
In addition to the agenda, if not, can we approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Bill, second by Scott. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approve the minutes of previous meetings.
I'll make the motion to approve the meeting minutes for Ward 418, 2016, Special Meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mark, second by Bill. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I think we have a little, but I'm not sure.
Motion to approve the Ward 418 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Bill, second by Mark. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors.
Good evening.
Uh, recap of April. We had 24 total calls in April, including that or a couple of structure fires outside of town here. 10 total calls within Hartford for the month. Some of the activities of April, business meeting on the 13th. EMS training on April 18th over patient assessment. We had also members attending a weather spotting class on April 18th. And fire training on the 27th for posed deployment and attack. Some of the upcoming things in May, May 11th, we have our annual or regular business meeting at 7:00 PM. Invite anybody who is open to or welcome to attend that meeting. EMS training on the 16th of May over trauma. Fire training on the 25th of May on vehicle expiration. Right now, we're scheduled to take delivery of that ladder truck that's been in the works the last year and a quarter on May 13th, barring any hiccups. So, once that point, it's probably gonna be about four to six weeks to get everybody trained on it, get it equipped and in service. The other upcoming event we have is May 22nd, Sunday, we are having the fundraiser pancake fee from 9:00 to 1:00 at the station. And along with that, we'll have the truck on display for the public to walk around and take a look at. Well, that's all I have for you guys.
So, when is the ladder truck gonna be?
May 13th.
May 13th, then it can be a few weeks to get rid of it.
Probably four to six weeks to get everybody equipped and get everybody trained on the proper and safe operation of it.
They should have it here every day.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have it. Have it around then.
Anything for Chief?
Is that, with that ladder truck, is that gonna, that's gonna affect our insurance?
It will have a very positive impact on our ISO rating.
When does that, when will that come into effect?
Well, we're looking, the plan with the ISO plan that we have established, we're probably looking at rerating about this time next year. By the time we have everything in place and ready to get the most impactful score, we can on it.
If I recall, you asked for Teresa and Craig to attend the meeting on camera, what that was?
Yeah, and that was to be part of the committee on an as-needed basis.
Okay, didn't get to doing that, or?
We haven't had a lot of need, a lot of what they're gonna do. Craig's gonna be working on the city water infrastructure and Teresa for some documentation standpoint. I don't wanna use a lot of their time until it's absolutely needed.
All right, anything else for Chief?
Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you. We want to have registered. We'll go right into the 705 Public Security Council.
Basically, this is a hearing to transfer liquor licenses from Sundarment Holdings to Kelton Enterprises. Basically, the software is being sold and it's gonna transfer the two licenses that they currently hold now. The retail on-sale liquor license, which is RL5617, and transfer the package off-sale liquor license, which is PL4584. And all of the applications have been filled out, the fees have been paid, and the data to transfer. So, everything's been completed paperwork.
Is there anybody here that'd like to be heard for this hearing?
I'll make the motion to approve the transfer of RL5617 and PL4584.
Second.
Discussion. Motion by Mark, second by Scott. Vote. Mark?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
All right, we get into old business, the discussion of finance. Teresa, may I say on that, you've been talking with the candidate?
Yep, after the last meeting, you asked me to contact candidate number five and make an offer to her for the position. I did that, she has accepted that offer and would be willing to start this coming Monday, May 9th. On terms, so we need to formally make that hiring motion for that.
I'll make the motion to hire Audra Sternkey at the rate of $21 an hour with a minimum raise of 50 cents an hour following a six-month probationary period. Start date to be May 9th. And that said hire shall include a waiver of the city's residency requirement. And that the offer should, or the hire should also include the all benefits per the employee handbook to begin on said start date.
I'll second that.
So, motion by Bill, second by Mark. Discussion. All right. Vote. John?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Mark?
Yeah.
Phil?
Yes.
Now, we get into quick appreciation to John McMahon. John, you've been great serving with you. Just as a board certificate for serving three-month appointment to Hartford City Council, you did a great job, John. Great job.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
I'd like to thank the City Council and especially the city employees. Teresa and Craig made this very easy on me. And Mark, Bill, Bill, Scott, it was a pleasure working with you guys. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. So, then we have the oaths, so I'm just gonna have the councilman come out. And Scott, you're gonna be first because you're an old head of this, right?
I always do it for verbiage, every time.
Why do you do this?
Go ahead. Hi, Scott Nelson, having been elected unopposed to the office of councilperson Ward 3 within and for the said city of Hartford, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and that I will faithfully and impartially be the best of my knowledge and ability to perform the duties to said office of councilperson as approved by law. I think I'm supposed to do that? I'm getting my hand up, okay? You want another one? Call sign over there.
Mr. Manning.
All right, get that out of town here. I, Jeremy Manning, having been elected unopposed to the office of councilperson Ward 3 within and for said city of Hartford, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all the duties of my said office, councilperson as provided by law.
You got the picture? Mr. Horn.
I, Ryan Horn, having been elected to the office of councilperson Ward 2 within and for said city of Hartford, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of South Dakota, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all the duties of my said office of councilperson as provided by law.
Mr. Brenneman.
I, Mark Brenneman, having been elected to the office of councilperson Ward 1 within and for said city of Hartford, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all the duties of my said office of councilperson as provided by law.
And what we need to do is have you sign, everyone's signing a form, and get this form back to Teresa, please.
To make a motion that we adjourn as well, councilor.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So, you guys can pin, you guys can pin later. Okay, we're gonna convene as new council. Roll call, Teresa?
Hey, Mayor Campbell.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Manning.
Here.
And Howgan is absent.
Hey, Howgan is absent. Howgan has given his notice of resignation. So, before we start your attendance, I've got something to say myself. So, I'm gonna address everybody from the podium. Evening, new council. You know, about eight months ago, shortly after the referendum, I sat down with the Chamber President and one of the council members this evening. Two reasons for that meeting. Two things I wanna get out of it. First of all, I wanted to let the chamber know that I wholeheartedly accepted the outcome of the referendum. And then, secondly, I wanted to see what the chamber stood after the referendum. It took about five days, maybe a week or so, and I got a communication from the chamber president that the businesses were not ready to move forward. Disappointed me, I guess, was the word I'd used. I kept talking to the elected officials since then. I talked to the department heads of the city about the need of Hartford to keep moving forward. You guys, a couple of you probably got tired of saying, "Moving forward, moving forward." First meeting in January, I read a little something about the hope that Hartford can move forward. In the last eight months or so, there's been a lot of passive-aggressive tactics. There's been a lot of drama drummed up on social media. There's been a failed recall attempt on my position. And I think worst of it all, the stuff that really hurt me was seeing Hartford in the news almost every night. That all took a toll. It took a toll on the elected officials. It took a toll on city staff. And it really took a toll on the community. So, I, in the last couple of months, I've really been trying to figure out what I can do to keep stuff moving forward with Hartford. And I, I'm thinking, I do a lot of traveling, do a lot of traveling recently, and thinking a lot, one thing I kinda go back to is when I was a younger person, a young boy, and going through some religion classes and being taught different things. One of those things that I was taught, I'm gonna practice this evening. I'm gonna, I'm gonna practice forgiveness. Tonight, Mr. and Mrs. Brenneman, if your wife isn't here, I forgive you. Mr. and Mrs. Olsonbaugh, I forgive you. Mr. and Mrs. Bus, I forgive you. Mr. Manning, I forgive you. Mr. Brenneman, I forgive you. Mr. Nelson, I forgive you. Mr. Monahan, I forgive you. In fact, I forgive anyone associated with that special interest group in town. And lastly, tonight, I wanna thank the citizens of Hartford for the privilege of being the mayor. Effective immediately, I resign. Your meeting.
Counsel?
Hang, hang on a minute, Scott. Mr. Nelson, we, it would seem that the city of Hartford currently doesn't have a mayor and currently doesn't have a council president to lead this next meeting. So, your advice would be?
I would suggest that the members of the body that are present make a motion to have one of you act as the chairman of the council for the purposes of electing a council president. Once you've elected a council president, I recommend that you have that council president to assume the chair and then move on to elect the vice president. At that time, we'll discuss what the statutes say as it relates to filling appointments. I will tell you that as it relates to the council, Monahan has resigned. Bill Howgan, you must appoint somebody from that ward as it relates to the mayor. You may appoint anyone, but they must be a resident of the city. And I don't know if you wanna catch your breath and...
I personally don't have any interest in appointing a mayor or another councilperson tonight. Cause I think, I think we're all caught flatfoot, so...
My recommendation is, is that one of you make a motion to appoint someone to act as the chairman, and then I'll try to walk you through it.
But, but we currently haven't called the new meeting to order. So, who called that?
Well, we're gonna elect the chairman, and then we're just gonna...
How can, how can you elect without calling?
We did call, we did take roll call and we called the meeting to order.
The new me?
Yes. We called the meeting to order, Bill read Bill Howgan's resignation, and then he wanted to address, so we are in the new meeting.
Oh, Mark.
Mr. Monahan, I nominate you as council chair as a most qualified and prestigious individual sitting at this table.
Can I back you up? I would like you first to nominate someone of you five to act as the chairman of the council.
That's what I just did, didn't I?
I thought you were trying to do it as the president.
No, no, I said council, council chair.
All right, I stand corrected.
That's okay, that's okay. You knew that was coming.
Second.
Make it, make a motion that...
I made a motion that nominates the seats.
Second.
Then someone make a motion that it be unanimous.
I make a motion that this be unanimous.
And all those in favor say aye.
And all of those in favor say aye.
Aye. You can flip over that sign if you want.
Your wonders never cease. Counselor?
Right about. The acting chairman of the council liked the record to reflect that the council's heard the resignation of councilman Bill Howgan and of the mayor, Bill Campbell. And has informed the council that this is the time and place for the election of a council president and that nominations to that position are open.
So, all of that, and at this time, we will take nominations for city council president. Anybody get a nicotine pill?
Counselor? Yes, sir. If I understand this correctly, nomination to the senior.
I got one more piece of correspondence, too. The D E N R is recognizing the city of Hartford for our drinking water compliance. So, we received the 2015 Drinking Water Compliance Award from the secretary's office. So, I wanna thank Craig and the crew for basically keeping our drinking water safe.
And I'd also like to thank Teresa Seidel for posting that on the website. Appreciate that.
Sure.
City engineer reports. Mitch?
This is just a letter we sent out to the contractor. I'm sure a lot of you know, you noticed that they had, they removed the pool the other day, Monday. They had, they were off under elevation by six inches. We've been dealing with them the last week or so, just we had a stop order put on them when we found that the air was made. Turns out, the contractor just read a state wrong. Pretty much as simple as that. And they built it six inches too high, and we directed them to tear it out, which they started doing, and they're gonna be reconstructing that pool over the next week. Hoping to have it back to the state it was by the end of the week or so. But this letter is just documentation to them, just stating, you know, kinda what, so there's a record, I guess, of that air and how it's being handled. It's completely on their own, their, their even basically. So, we just wanted to leave you guys knowing, kind of remember that. I don't know if you guys have any questions, I'm sure people around town have had a lot of questions about it, wondering what's going on, but...
Will this affect the opening date of the pool?
No, they're still committed to the June 15th. They did told us they can still meet that. I do believe, you do open in, is it three weeks or two weeks?
We're gonna open the pool, the regular pool, May 24th, we decided that. But in the bid documents, they have a completion date of June 15th, so...
It will, it might affect your opening by a week, cause they have to get the fence up between the old pool and this new pool. Before we, you guys can have people swimming in the, you know, the big pool. So, we're monitoring that. Right now, we're thinking that might be a week delay on their schedule. They, they're telling us they can still meet it, but I'm just cautioning you guys, I guess we could end up with a delay there on the pool opening.
Do they have a penalty clause at all?
Yep, no penalty on the...
What is it?
I don't know, I would guess that it's around $1,000 a day. Four fifty, four fifty. It's not even a dollar like it's not a big contract, so it's about $50 a day.
So, this third paragraph, Mitch, that talks to the drainage pit?
Yep, and we met with city staff out there, and how we reviewed the drain lines through there, and how old are we gonna winterize that? And they, we were all on board.
So, you're all right with that, credit me, all right?
Actually drains now back to the pool. So, we'll just have to pump that out, and then they show us what, or how to winterize it. So, is that gonna work, okay, no?
That's acceptable.
And nobody's really responsible for winterizing it the first time, showing us how to do that, so the local city staff do that.
So, just, just so I understand something, cause I did take a peek at that. And, and is there a drain in the bottom of that right now, or is?
It's, yeah, it just got put in today.
Oh, okay, so, well, you know, last week, and I'm like, how in the world are we gonna drain this?
Yeah, there's always been a drain in the bottom of it, yeah.
There has, I couldn't see it, okay.
You know, it's for, for recirculating drain.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, so, once again, if I understand this correctly, as this states, then the drainage, once done for the year or whatever, will drain into the main pool, and then...
It'll drain into the new pool. It drains, but everything drains from the new building that we're putting out. It'll drain to the kids' kiddie pool or zero-entry pool. And then we'll pump that out, and then we'll put RV antifreeze in there with the bottles, like that. Everything has plugs in it, so I mean, everything can get plugged back, so enough of the backend lines are into the, through the features.
Yeah, you winterize a feature is pretty similar to winterizing like irrigation system. Yeah, you put a compressor to it, and you blow it out, and you cap it on.
You gonna have a pitch?
Um, we do have a payout for them, and you'll notice that we reviewed that, we struck out the pool item, I guess, the pool equipment. They're requesting a value of about $65,000 value. We were not paying that, how since they had to pay, so we just revised a payout according to them. What you see here is basically work that they have accomplished that has been accepted and done directly.
You need a motion for that?
Yeah.
You feel confident that, and what was that about again?
Uh, the payout?
The $51,000, $632.50.
Yeah.
For line nine.
So, the, the total of the contract here is... So the total of the contract here is three thirty-four, two hundred?
Saw that.
Yep. So right now, we're paying, no, pay this incrementally as they get work done out there. Right now, we've got about fifty-one thousand dollars worth of work complete.
Make a motion to approve payment. That's submitted. Second. I'm not second to him, but I want to second him.
I'll second.
End of discussion.
So, so once again, this fifty-one K, okay? They've done that work?
Yes, so they've done, they've done, like, the concrete pad for the, um, building that went out there, they've done, they put posts in for the fence, so there's some work that they've done that's acceptable, and that's the value of the fifty-one thousand.
Okay, so it doesn't include the, uh, stuff that you'll be tearing out and putting back in?
That's why, that's why on the second page, got the, you know, item number four, pool and everything, we just struck that out. That's, that's my red line, so paying zero on that sixty-five.
All right, okay.
Further questions?
Yes.
For vote, Brian?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, just these other projects, I'm not sure how familiar everybody is with these, but, you know, Mike Franklin Trail is the trail that's running along Railroad Street, because everybody's familiar with what that project entails. It's kind of a long story to it, where we've been and where we're trying to get to, but generally, we're trying to build a trail system along railroad from where the trail system ends currently, along railroad up the highway ditch along the school, okay? Um, we've been waiting for our agreements. I had reached out to the DOT again, and they asked us to forward some preliminary information for getting our agreements going, so, um, hopefully, we're moving towards getting our agreements in place of this process, but, um, we're kind of just holding, we're just waiting for our agreements to get, waiting for them to start working on that project.
So this is just from, just railroad property, basically, right?
Yeah, railroad avenue from where it did, where it leads off now, and then it turns and goes up Highway 38 to the north, or northwest, eight.
To the existing trail?
The second street.
To where the cross, and here's that was school, and then I'll get on the...
So it's gonna run up on the other side of thirty, so you want to have a path on both sides?
Yep.
We did that way to that cross, and there you go. I don't think any questions on that, right?
This is the one where we had issues with, we're on both sides of the road on railroad, okay?
Is that our phone?
Going on, this is planning review. I work, we work with city staff on planner reviews that come through, so site plans, preliminary plans that come in for subdivisions, those sort of things, we're constantly reviewing those things that they come in. Um, some recent ones that we've done were the Turtle Creek addition, which is the San Hasse, and then on out to the southeast side of town. Um, we just received that last week. Sometimes we're making comments in that. We just met today with city staff to kind of go over your comments. Uh, we'll be responding to them with those comments, and then we'll start seeing those plans appear in front of you guys as we get closer to approval. Um, we also did, we'll plant review for South Main addition, and that's another addition down on where Mickelson and Main Avenue meet, and we're gonna do some new houses down there. Um, that's all I've got here, but I did, we checked on the base flood, we're, sounds like we're good to go on that, expecting our approval in the next week.
Really?
So, yeah.
That's been a long time coming, too.
Yeah, so we've actually can get, you know, an asset ground, we've been waiting on some of that information, so we can allocate that in front of them. And what we did there was we established a floodway through that creek bottom, and it really comes into play when we have developers want to develop along there. So for the asset people, it was, uh, it was something that they've been waiting for, so they can continue forward with their development, so.
But, I mean, that's two, two totally different topics. There's the floodway and the floodplain.
Yep.
And you can play in the floodplain to take property out of the floodplain, but the floodway is completely off limits for anything, correct?
Well, it's just, it's a bigger, lot more hoops you have to jump through to do anything in a floodway, I mean, yeah. Um, we also met today with city staff just to start talking about the east side, southeast side, about sewer extensions and the same, so we're working with them on some different thoughts on, you know, how to plan for that areas we've got, we've got a lot of interest on that side of town, so we just wanted to make sure that we got all our stuff in line with our infrastructure and things like that, so we've been working through that also.
Any questions? Any other questions for Mitch?
Trucee, can you give me that on that floodway or floodplain?
Well, I just, yeah, gonna discuss a little bit. Right now, in the city, we have a floodplain established, and like Mitch said, you can do certain building within the floodplain, um, you have to, you know, as long as you build above the base flood elevation, and we've established those throughout town. There's certain activities that can be done there. Uh, we never did establish, the FEMA never did establish for us a floodway, which basically is within the floodplain, but it's a narrower strip, and like Mitch said, you pretty much can't do any building there. There's a lot of loops you gotta go through to be able to do, they don't want you to do anything in the floodway. Like, we never had that established before, so we had stockwell engineers go through, shoot all the elevations, and figure out where that exactly lies. So when we got developers like South Main or Assam that are getting close to our floodplain, we know how far into the floodplain they can approach before, you know, they'll hit that floodway, so they have done that, all the information to FEMA. FEMA's been reviewing it all the last few months, and it sounds like we're getting close to finally getting approval of that, so now we'll have at least that established, too, so we know exactly where in that floodplain you can do something and where you can't. So that'll be valuable information, especially, especially for developers, like you said, or people that want to do something.
South Main has been waiting on that, too, so it affects their development, too.
Anything else for Mitch? Thanks for that. Public Works Superintendent Craig?
Uh, for streets, just kind of working on the ground roads, trying to keep them in best shape for kid right now, um, continuing to work on them. Streets moving, should be just all wrapped up, as much as we're getting down at this time. Uh, this next month, they're planning on doing the regulatory signs and street signs throughout town with that new Red Bull activity project, that is that fully funded DOT project that the county and DOT put together. So they should be replacing those here this next, this month here. Along with the county project, Colton Road, um, they got started on it now this last Monday. They are planning on getting to the Hartford area, they're gonna try and work on the north part of it more so, and then get into the county part, um, probably the end of June, middle of June or something like that, or here's what they're gonna be starting that Hartford area on that. Mosquito sprayer that we've had for a few years, we did take it, runs great, you're like that, we did take it to a class here last week, and it has been calibrated up to the state, limits, whatever, so it's in good shape. We did apply for about eleven thousand for mosquito grants. It's a grant that they came out with about three years ago, they've been pretty much same amount of money. We typically get about six thousand, four to six dollars, so hopefully, we'll get something again this year. Boulevard trees, we've got, there's a few of them that bikes got left to plant and then replace, about two or three yet from last year's, warquy ones that we'll be getting and taking care of. And we did get the trees added out to third grade class here last Friday. Watered sewer, I did get the quarterly D M R sent in. I did have the NIC for pneumonia, so I, it's moving ahead, but that's where it's at. Also, uh, for water, that, um, that loop that we're gonna put in along Colton Road, to get the application sent to the county, and they have got to commit back for us, we can get started on that. We're planning on, uh, getting started around the end of May on that project. The only other thing, small thing at the sewer plant, we did have a pump go down today at about seven, ten, um, we do have it up and running again, so it was electrical starter on it that went out. Park and pool, Neil and the guys got the pool, the old pool, um, acid washed the other day, and they did get it painted today, so we're getting close to getting that ready to open up. We do have to replace the heater yet, which we have budget money, we actually have a heater in our shop, just waiting to switch things out. Been kind of waiting for the con, pool contractor to get some of the, some of their work done in there, so that we can get in there without having any issues with it. And along with that, we are gonna have to move our gas line to, for the build, for the bulk heaters out there, there's gonna be, there's two separate heaters for the pools, because they're on two separate systems, so we're in the process of getting that switched over, too. The only other thing is Turtle Creek park, um, we are hoping here a couple weeks or so to get in there, we're gonna kind of wait for it to dry up a little bit, but we're gonna put that storm sewer in there, get that diverted over, and get that part cleaned up a little more. And the only other thing I have on my report is, um, we hired four personnel last meeting for part-time help, and one of them, I called him up to talk to him, he had already passed on the job, so I did interview another one today, and I'd like to hire, so I'd have the four, um, part-time people for the summer. Uh, and the guy I'd like to hire is Blake Sloboda, Sloboda, something like that, it's S V O B A D A, so he's from town here, so. At nine dollars an hour, I'm starting when I start them out.
Make a motion to, um, hire Blake, I'll take a shot, just Sloboda, whatever his spelling is, and then per hour, uh, for public records assistant.
Second. End of discussion. Little vote for Jeremy?
Hi.
Brian?
Yes.
Mark?
That's all I got, unless somebody has something to add, so.
How did the pond just happen to walk over me, Kevin?
We're sitting pretty good, the pump kept up well, um, we're still in pretty good shape. We've figured out we're gaining right now about an inch and a half on the ponds, on our pond, you know, and then plus whatever rain you get on top of it, so we're, we're okay now. We just grabbed samples last week, uh, we took them down, I haven't got the results back yet, but if we do get in compliance with a pond, we are going to be discharged now, so let it go.
Could you guys put Sam in the paint on the pool?
Yeah.
Ma'am, do you need to come in?
Um, I think she needs Craig. We need you. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Three time ourselves for another couple days.
Two days, yep. Um, basically, just put in the report a breakdown of, um, our financials and the proceeds that have come in during the last month. I am starting to do month and not the end of the month, I'll be closing out the monthly reports for April. Um, also, just gave me a breakdown of what we have, our cash balances on hand for our general fund, and where we're sitting for our revenue and expenses in that fund, and then a calendar of events coming up, that's for the finance officer report.
Any questions for the current finance officer? City administrator report?
City administrator report, um, just a D N update, um, on the AGDC and how their meetings are going, um, continue to go to their Friday morning meetings. I mentioned before, they are updating the housing study, and we've got ahold of the company that did it last time for us, and they are going to do it again, do an amendment to it, gonna go over it and update it for us. They plan to start that process here in the later part of May or beginning of June, and hoping to get it done before fall coming. Also, I did receive, uh, an RFI, which is a request for information from the governor's office regarding, um, business, a manufacturing business is looking to locate in this area, the Sioux Falls area. We couldn't respond to it because one of their definite requirements is they needed a rail system, and we don't have rail here, so we haven't had some that one, but, um, we did, did get a request come in. Wanted to give you a little update on Makita, and that's the Minnehaw County Economic Development Association that we belong to. I attended a meeting this last week. They are working on doing a strategic plan, and basically, they're working, Minnehaw County and Lincoln County are working together, um, they want to work with the communities to basically see what Makita or Lakita, and that's Lincoln County, should be doing for the communities. They want input from the communities, want our input, to find out, what do we want from, what do we, you know, want to see them doing? So they're gonna start the process of the strategic plan, and kind of the meeting we had last week was just for board members, which I'm on the board, kind of just go over a few basic things. Now we're gonna have community meetings, which the city councils are gonna be invited to of each community, the development corporation, so like our AGDC will be invited, or Planning and zoning, and get your guys' input of how we can work together to help spur development in the area or region. So I don't have a definite date of when that will be. I know the meeting in our area will be at Crook's, and it'll probably be in later May or early June sometime, but I'll keep you posted to let you know for sure when that's gonna be. It'll probably be an evening meeting, so, um, if you can participate at all, I know that will be, they'll be looking for that, they would like to have that. Um, otherwise, in your packet, I provided an updated contact list for the board, so you are able to have phone numbers and emails to get ahold of each other, to get ahold of the city staff. Jared, Officer Toronos, wanted me to put a reminder at the council meeting again about all the recent thefts. He's brought it up, I know, a couple times in his report. They have a lot of thefts in the areas, and it isn't just Hartford. Crook's got hit real hard one day, I think, seven different thefts in one night, um, Sioux Falls area, Brandon, Garrett, basically, it is mainly items that are unlocked, unlocked vehicles, unlocked garages, houses, so lock up your stuff, you know, shut your garage doors when you're not home, or even when you're home. They're, they're targeting the easy spot, so, you know, to kind of help deter that, just want a reminder out there, lock up your vehicles, don't leave anything of value sitting around, or, don't make it easy for them, I guess, so. And then I just put on there a couple of things that, um, are gonna be coming up on the agenda items that, now that we have a full council, or did have a full council in place, I kind of want to start working on. Uh, you guys realize that the P and Z board has been working on zoning regulations, they've done an amendment to it, it's passed all of their readings of it, it's now gonna come before the city council, look for that to be coming, um, this month to you guys for your review, and a public hearing on that. Also, um, Leroy Stumpy has some ground right north of the city that is inside city limits, uh, he would like to put that into a rural service district. And what a rural service district is for some of you new members, it's ground that is inside city limits, that is basically classified as ag, so it has no development on it, it has no building on it, it's not, you know, um, giving revenue for the city from it, it's basically kind of ag ground, yeah, it's not developed ground. And we do have a few other rural service districts within the city, up by the water tower that land all around there, that's a rural service district. A good portion of Cressman's property is a rural service district, the undeveloped part of it, a portion of Costello's, West Meadows is also a rural service district, and then some ground that New York has going to the lagoons is that also. Um, what a rural service district does, you know, city, if they agree to put it into a rural service district, instead of getting the city tax rate on that property, since it's basically considered ag, they will tax them at the township rate. We still get the taxes, but they get a lower tax rate. Now, and it stays that way until they develop it, though. So as soon as they start developing, developing it, um, planning it out, um, putting buildings on it or whatever, then it goes up to the city classification, so. That, he is asking for that rural service district, so I am doing an ordinance to amend that, you guys can start thinking about it, it won't come before you until the next meeting, but that's basically what it entails. So just want to kind of forewarn you on that a little bit and kind of explain that.
Difference in tax dollars from what he's paying now to get with zoning, though?
It's ag now, it's, so, um, I'll, I'll have to look at for sure what the difference between the township and the city.
It shouldn't be any. What an ag service district says, if you, if you take agricultural land and put it in the city, the deal is it won't be taxed any more than if we're still out in the county. But the benefit for the city is by them bringing it in, you're able to control what happens there. But the benefit for the city is by them bringing it in, you're able to control what happens there. And what's also the benefit of that landowner, he can say to someone that wants to develop, well, look, I'm in the city now and we can get the, you know, densities in the cities that we can't get out of the county. So they could, it's a win for both, but the, the advantage to the farmers that there's no tax.
He doesn't get a higher rate, he, he doesn't get the higher rate for it being developed, it still, you know, gets it as undeveloped.
Does it make any difference if he has ag buildings on that, that piece of property?
It currently has any buildings on it?
Yeah.
Or if he puts some on it, yeah, will make a difference, but.
I'm just familiar with, I'm not sure with what property he's, that's a piece of north.
It would be right north of Parkey Drive, it'd be right north of that. There's a little chunk that kind of.
Have a pe, couple pieces of, uh, there are a couple buildings on that one, so.
Yeah, it currently does, but they're not being, yeah.
Not, not obviously, they're just more than buildings.
Right. So, so like I said, he'll, he'll continue the same tax rate, but he won't get a higher rate as a developed land. So, you can start thinking about that. And then, um, I've kind of mentioned to the new council coming in and we've kind of mentioned it before. Um, now that we're kind of getting into this year, we're gonna start talking about possibly Mickelson Road developing it. We, like I said, we're talking with stockwell engineer, seeing what the best way to do that. So, um, we'll just kind of, like I said, we're gonna staff, we're gonna start talking about different scenarios of how to develop Mickelson Road and what the best approach is. And then we'll kind of bring those scenarios to the council for you guys to discuss and figure out what the best way is to develop out in that area. So that'll be coming up in future agendas too, so. That's all I have on my report, you know.
Thanks, Tracy.
Anybody have any questions for Tracy? Uh, we need to go into executive session?
Yeah, for personnel.
Would you add also to the motion to consult legal counsel, please?
That wasn't my motion, that was a question. If somebody would like to make a motion.
Yeah.
To go into executive session for personnel of legal.
Make a motion to go into executive session for personnel of legal.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Whoa, 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 whoa. You forgot the pool hires.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Somebody needs to make a motion to come out?
I make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry about that, good thing you caught that, Mark. Um, on, on your desk there, I put a recommendation for lifeguard hires. We in April, we usually hire eight lifeguards to be able to staff all the shifts at, um, the pool. In April, we hired six applicants. We had one of those applicants basically taken on a position, drop out, so we were down to five. We did reopen the advertising for it through the end of the month. We got three new applicants for that position, so with the five that's left and these three, if we hire one, will put us up to eight, so I think we'll be able to man all the shifts hopefully with that. So, um, I interviewed over yesterday and today, Jason Steckney, Madison Monahan and Hannah Miller. I did have, do have on there recommended pay rate for each. Um, Madison and Hannah would be at our starting pay rate at ten dollars, they are new hires for the city. On basis, worked last year as a lifeguard with the city, so I'm recommending that base plate plus the twenty-five cents for your experience of ten twenty-five.
Do you have any? Do you know, each one, each one or do you want?
Probably each one individually.
I make a motion to, uh, hire Jason Steckney here too with the incremental raise of twen, well, do I say a dollar?
I bet you, just a pay rate of ten twenty-five.
A pay rate of twen, ten twenty-five.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Make a motion to approve mom, mom Madison Monahan at the rate of ten dollars per hour for a lifeguard.
My second. Any discussion?
I make a motion to hire Hannah Miller?
Oh, we, we.
We're gonna do this individually.
He was getting me all riled up.
Let's say terms. What, yes?
Aye.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Now abstained.
Good, I make a motion to hire Hannah Miller at the rate of ten dollars an hour.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, now I will entertain a motion and go back into the executive session.
Make a motion to enter executive session.
Personnel legal.
Personnel and legal, SDCL one dash two five dash two.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Take a vote, opposed?
He did have a red card, red card.
She should be.
She should, she should be.
She's having a pot up in there, they're gonna have a man.
I would, uh, I would entertain a motion at this time for the interview process.
In regards to the economic development area, I make a motion to, uh, request interviews for candidates one, two and five on Monday, or correction, on May twenty-fourth, sorry, I don't know what day that is, starting at seven PM.
Second. Is there any, is there any discussion?
Can I use my notes, Eric?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I put, entertain a motion to the executive. Journey. Thum. Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Thank you for coming.